The town of Crewe, Virginia, regular council meeting August 10th, 2015 will come to order. This evening, we have the pleasure of Bishop Nathaniel Jones of the Dominion Worship Center, who has come to give us that invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Fisher.
Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come together in your precious name. Lord, we've come in this meeting, we invite your presence to guide and lead this body of people, Lord, they have been chosen to lead this town. We pray God give them strength and power, Lord, to do the thing that is pleasing to serving of this community in a right way. We thank you for our mayor, we thank you for our council, we thank you for the employees of this town, we pray God you'll bless this town. We pray God the vision of this town will continue to grow and to move forward according to your perfect will. Lord, we thank you for all that you've given this town down through the years. But God, we pray now, Lord, that whatever you do now, God, that we may receive it as a people. We thank you right now, Lord, we pray your blessing upon this community like you know before. Let us be one in spirit. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
I did thank Bishop Jones and his loving wife for coming, and we invite you to stay in your civic meeting and all, and we wish you'd come back tomorrow.
We will.
Okay, moving on, we will move on to, after my present open comments, you will see on your agenda that we went to have a presentation from David Farby, who is the Director of Operations at Harvey Design Land Architects on the forestry grant. But I believe this afternoon he called that there was some sickness of part of the staff, and he was not going to be able to make this presentation tonight. We were hoping that it would be an informative presentation because we need the pertinent information of just what this forestry grant included, so that council could further on down make decisions of how much money, how much income, time, and all that we would be providing. I believe Mr. Walker, you said that he suggested that maybe a conference call tomorrow morning.
Yes.
I don't know if, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Vice Mayor, but would you maybe be available too? Or do you, I mean, do you, since it's a short notice?
I can, Jones has another appointment.
Okay. I'm not trying to just single her out, but maybe if one of you could join us tomorrow, you know, one councilperson, because, yeah, we just, well, two at the max, because that's only, that's only the legal part, but in case. There are so many questions that Wade and I had, and we really felt like the presentation would help us better understand just exactly what we were awarded and where to go from there and what it included, and all, before we, you know, had to ask council to make more decisions on this grant. So that's why I was saying if, you know, we could have one or two of the council people, you know, there for the conference call, so.
What time do we take off?
Ten o'clock.
Fifty in the house.
Okay.
All tears.
Okay. Delegation from the public and citizens comments, this is a time for anyone in the audience, if you have a concern or just a matter of something that you would like to say, that, you know, we welcome you now. We have a quiet bunch tonight. Okay. In front of you, council, you have your consent calendar, which are matters on the consent calendar that are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of the members of council, and may be voted on separately. Included are your minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, July 13th, 2015, the bill sheet, which you have been given an addition to, that will be needed to be included. Tiffany gave you an addition. The original bill sheet was for $141,499.64. You received an addition of $6,659.33, which brings our total bill sheet for today at So having expressed that, what is council's pleasure? Is there any addition corrections to the minutes?
One thing on the minutes, unless I'm not reading it correctly, under the town attorney's report, you get down to the part about, under town attorney, it's one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, talking about the invitation, says invitation needing to be done by a guest and not a member of council, so it would, I don't think like, so it would not appear as though the council, that doesn't make sense.
I just need to take that word out.
Okay. It's not a big deal, but it's.
So we are going to delete the word "like," so it would appear. Any other additions? Any questions on the bill sheet or the additions?
Make the motion, we approve the consent calendar with the corrections of the minutes and additions to the bill sheet.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendar with the correction to the minute and the addition to the bill sheet. All those in favor seem to follow by aye.
Aye.
Like opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Town manager.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Things have been positive for quite some time, as far as we've been concerned, on the sewer project up until last week. As most of you know, the town experienced a really unusual rain event. I personally haven't seen a rain like that, so hard, so fast, but it was a good test of what's going on in our system, as far as what improvements have been made to date. I've got some statistics and that type of thing to kind of show everybody, rain, rain started falling around 1:00. And within 35 minutes, we were experiencing extremely high blows in our sewer pump stations. And by 2:23 PM, both our emergency holding tanks were in operation, and the station itself was within approximately 20 minutes of overflow. We did not overflow. We did have one manhole that discharged in the east end and one in the west end that discharged. The rain stopped about 1:55. We got almost three inches within that period of time. By 3:15, the pump station shut down and everything was back to normal. So on the one hand, this is the same problem that we faced in the past with extremely high levels of rain and water at one time, this one was a little bit heavier than we experienced, but it still points to the fact that we've still got an issue. The situation with I and I, as you will remember, we had inflow and we had infiltration, that's what I stand for. Infiltration is basically cracked laterals, cracked lines, holes in lines, things that would more or less show up, say, next day or the day after that, in a situation where maybe we get a week's worth of rain before we have a lot of snowmelt. This particular situation was inflow. Inflow is pretty much storm drain connection, downspouts on the houses, something that causes an extreme rush into the system. We had hoped that we were resolving all these issues with everything that's been done, but this sort of proves that we have not. So we did some smoke testing in the east end, we did not find anything major, which is what we're looking for. We have been in touch with our engineers to let them know that we feel like there's some more work that needs to be done. We've got to find this type of situation. It's a mystery right now, and it's a, it's a real problem. And that type of an event may not happen very often, but we basically don't want any overflow situation regardless of what it is. And this proves that we still have a problem. So we probably will be, we'll end up going back to a smoke testing situation, which we've done in the past a couple of times since I've been town manager. And basically, what you discover is that you've got a lot of, I don't like to use the word illegal connections, that's the official term, but these are connections that I would say 90% of what we find is on private property. It's my lateral and your lateral, it's, the house is connected to the sewer system as far as a salt pump or a basement drain. The smoke identifies these type situations, which is a good thing. The bad thing is trying to figure out how to get people to fix them. That's where I think this time around, we're probably going to have to have Tessie's input. I personally would like to make it as simple as possible, she's told me we can't do this before, but if a house has an illegal connection, you give them a specific amount of time to take care of it. If they don't, then we just continue to count services. That would, you know, immediate response. She don't like that, I know. Of course, the other thing is, I'm sure she would say, go to court, get a court order, that type of thing. Some of you will recall that at one time, we were paying for this type of repair. Town had a fund set aside that was assisting people. We had a lot of people that took advantage of it, we had a lot that didn't. But it's something we're going to have to address, because we have not found this type of a situation. Tri-state has TP'd every line in the east end. We just, we just don't have this type of situation, so we've got to figure it out. We found a bunch of things the other day, but they were, in a combination, may cause this problem, but for example, someone might have a cleanout on their line that was busted, say, a lawnmower, you know, and there's an open hole there. We did find a couple of those, but this, this type of situation is big and is fast. In fact, at this time, it went away as fast as it did to me, proves that once it quit raining and the level somewhere, either in a drainage ditch or a storm drain, when the level fell off, then so did the level in our, in our pump station. So it's very discouraging, because we're almost at the end of this project, and I have no doubt that infiltration has, has been solved or helped a great deal, but we've still got this particular issue. And we just got fired, it's just one of those things. We have involved engineers, we've talked to, we, two finance agencies briefly, had a, had a discussion with them, their concern as well, because they've got a vested interest. And I think we'll, we'll figure this out when we've got, I think we've got to be standing fast this time. Once we locate these things, we've got to make sure that they're correct. And I know it's a burden on people, and I realize many of them inherited a, a house, they didn't know they had these connections, but it's something that's, that's got to happen. Hopefully, we'll be able to help them in some way, it's something we have to do straight. I think I've covered it as much as I can. I guess we'll get the details in and see what the options we have. We have them on its own, but everything we need, it's just a matter of figuring out how we're going to do it. To follow up on a few items, I had asked the county building inspector to take a look at the old theater building on Main Street. A lot of us have been concerned about that particular structure, and find out if it could safely be demolished or brought down. He suggested hiring someone else to look at it, like our engineers or another engineering firm, a consultant to come in. The concern is that the mall is connected to, is adjacent to it, which is operating right now, known by a very name, there's a grocery store in First Ward. So the concern is that if we go removing structure or compromising, we've got to find that out. At the very least, I think we've all agreed, the ones that have looked at it, that a couple of trees growing up in the back would even be taken down. They may in themselves compromise the structure. So I'm trying to get in touch with the owner, have not been successful, the telephone number disconnected, so I've got to keep trying to get in touch with him. The owner, I feel like he probably will let us do that. I'm not sure that we can do it, we may have to hire somebody. I'll keep everyone informed.
Have we looked into the, if there are any leans on that property?
There, there are some tax leans.
Federal?
Federal. But we being the ones that have discussed it, feel like we could probably contact them and have them forgive that.
Right.
I think if we get in touch with the owner and discuss it in the proper way, that it's a possibility that he may turn that property over to the town, and then he can go in and have something done.
I think that would be the best way to do it. My first.
Either way, he's going to be told that it's got to be done, and it would be in his best interest, I think, to do that.
Right. And I'm not sure the best way of going about it, but to have them give it to us under the condition that we can get those leans forgiven first?
Yes, yes.
I would rather, yeah, I would rather we get the leans forgiven prior to them giving it to us than any other leans, you know, make sure all of those are cleared before we accept it, in all conditions.
Along those lines, and I think Tessie was probably going, much, much on the, in her email, we were successful on the plan in July. Received the court, gave us permission to remove the structure, to clean up the property at 305 East Carolina Avenue. We do have to wait for a window?
So work that out for a day.
Yeah. After your day, next week, we'll start advertising for someone to come in and give us a deal and taking it down. We will be sure that whoever does that is in compliance and knows what they need to do with regard to asbestos and that type of thing. That will be part of the bid process, and I hope we can show the deal, get that text through. It'll be interesting to see the bid cost, we need to see this, because this is, we're in with so many properties, and it will be good to know what kind of money we're talking about.
I have a question for the town manager. Is there any, is there any particular point in a time where you noticed that, say, something like trees are coming up through a building, that we feel that it is such a hazard, that we have to, can we legally go ahead and take them down if we feel it's such a hazard, suppose hurricane or something? You know, because things seem to get so spaced out.
Guess it depends on the situation, and this particular building is abandoned and hasn't been anybody in it for years, and been used for a particular reason. If you had someone that you were approaching that was living on the property, we'd probably have to give them due notice in some way, shake them off and give them time to repair the technical damage, treat it pretty much like a business situation.
Yes, unless we can, there is a provision, and I would need to review it to see if it would suit this purpose, but there is a provision under the building code that the town has adapted for imminent danger, like very serious things. So, you know, it may fall under that, or it may need to fall under, you know, giving notice, things like that.
Any questions for the town manager, council? Moving on, town attorney's report.
Yes, thank you. And for the most part, Wade has told you all what I've been doing this past month, and the biggest thing was getting the court order to clean up the property and to remove the building in the area south of East Carolina. That was good. Working on a few other things, I also wanted to point out the zoning ordinance, we've been working on the home occupation requirements and regulations, I reviewed the latest draft today, and that is fine. There was a question that was posed to me regarding conditional use permits, because when I had originally drafted, and with every draft I've done since then, I have made the recommendation that home occupations can be approved, you know, these new home occupations can be approved with a conditional use permit. What a conditional use permit is, is it is a permit that the town government would adopt that will put certain restrictions on the person that was applying for a home occupation, over and above, you know, the restrictions that are currently listed in the ordinance. And the reason why I have suggested that is just so if the town is going to allow home occupations, that the town be able to have some oversight over each specific home occupation. The way that a conditional use permit is applied for, generally what happens, and, you know, the town could, I actually have some examples of some applications for conditional use permits that have come from other governing bodies, that the town could get, and the person fills out, fills out an application, puts down their proffers or what their conditional uses, what they think they should be. After that, the zoning administrator would review it, take it to the planning commission, planning commission would look at it, the planning commission can, you know, say, yes, this looks good, I like what the owner's recommended, or the planning commission can say, no, you know, I want to tweak it a little bit and, you know, make some changes on the conditions. After that, the planning commission would make a recommendation to town council as to what it thinks town council could do, and it would just be a recommendation. And then there would be, there'd be a public hearing with town council, people would talk on it, and then town council would either accept the planning commission's recommendation, or it could, you know, change some conditions, and then it would be issued. In summary, it's kind, it's a lot like anything that goes through the zoning process, you know, either it has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals or the planning commission, and then it would need to be uploaded back on site.
There would almost need to be a fee charged for it in order to cover the, the advertising and all, that you would have to have a fee to cover costs, so, you know, break easily.
That's a good point, too. A lot of localities need charging, need an application. So in other words, the application wouldn't be complete until the person takes the fee.
So is that an addition to the change in the discussion?
That would be an addition to the changes to the home occupation ordinance. And so of course, you know, it's up to council, if council do not require that level of supervision over every home occupation, council could certainly make the home occupation a use of rights with, you know, just the restrictions that we're going to put in the ordinance, and no conditional use permit.
I just, I don't see, I'm having trouble seeing Wade, you both. You've got guidelines following that, saying, oh, follow one, which is what we're going to walk the way, and then follow that up, if you can apply for a conditional use, I'm confused.
I believe the thought of the Economic Development Committee was, some of the things that we were looking at using the ordinance that we, that was sent to us, there are some things that we would be restricting, but we may want to allow for, under special uses, under, so allowing individuals a, an opportunity to apply and get around the solid, you can't do this.
Or to show reasonably why it would not affect the negative.
Exactly. Like, for, for example, we were looking at, in R1 District, we don't allow schools or educational areas. One thing we were talking about amongst ourselves was, what if a, an individual wanted to just teach piano in her, in her home, you know, one or two students a week, would we allow that? According to the ordinance, we would not. But is there a process that's not too bureaucratic that they can go through and apply to, to do that?
Well, what I have heard, each year, there's a fee in the R1, it's going to charge, I think, some of the communities charge the fee, even though they're paying a business license, too. They have to apply each year for that, that license, to the, to operate and all, things like that, books.
And that would be up to council, certainly you all could, you know, set limits on this conditional use permit comes up for renewal every year, you could do that in the conditional use permit, you know, so that the council would be able to control the level of review that they had. Council could also say, you know, this conditional use permit's going to be reviewed in five years. So it's completely up to, you know, council, what sort of levels for you, you all want to have with it, or, you know, exactly how.
I see both sides of it. I see changing the ordinance to allow certain things, and I understand that. Also see the conditional use permit for, let's say, things not covered, but I also see a lot of gray areas in there. And I'm trying to think specifically, say, you limit the amount of traffic, which is part of what we put in there, that can come to that particular residence on a certain period of time, say, daily. Well, at what point does it become too much? And who makes that call? And that's why I, the less gray area we have, I think the better off we are. I would rather see more, more like when someone requests a variance on a dummy, where I, as administrator, say, I'm sorry, we can't do that based on these rules, and they say, we can't request a variance. Then it goes to the planning or whatever, and it's heard that way. And we may not get to a year, I don't know, you know, but I see more and more of that going on, and I also see a lot of it that has been going on, and it's never been there. So like you were talking about, if someone teaches piano, nobody's going to say anything about that, but it is a business.
So they should get a business license?
Yeah.
If they are earning.
And I, I just don't know how far you go with something like that. This whole thing started, as y'all know, with someone needing, wanting to conduct internet, so no traffic, no, maybe a delivery once a week, and this real low-key, everything online, that's what started this whole discussion. Which I think most of us would agree is not a problem, but at what point does it become a problem? And who makes the call? That's what I see.
Well, and right now, at the way Well, and right now, as the way it's written, R1 zoning, that is not permitted.
Yes.
See, that's the thing, it is not permitted.
But the problem is, we've got some already here.
Right, right.
I think we need to find it, somewhere in the middle there, you know. I just don't want us to fall down on this stuff, you know, way to draw the line. Just a little, since I want to take one.
Any other comments?
That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
I, I do have a question going along with what the town manager said. What legally, what extent legally can the governing body go to with the present circumstances by law, when we suspect that people are running their downspouts, their sump pumps, sewer systems?
And I need to look at that research again, I know I've done that research, so, you know, it shouldn't be too hard for me to put my hands on it, but specifically, all panel don't know, but I'll sort of let you on that, you know, dip, dip, so.
Yes, ma'am, I'm running the sump pump for you. Down through the drain that would go into the sewer system, you see, so when you get the deluge of rain, that goes down, of course, some pumps could cut on it, instead of it being pumped out into the yard, in some cases, is what they're, what he was talking, it's being, it's being pumped into the sewer system, and see, that, that causes then, yes, and, and that, and those of you who are on council back, and I want to say 2005, 2006, when we had been charged a fine by DEQ, they allowed us to open up an account, and we advertised and advertised, I think it was around sixty thousand plus. They wanted to penalize us, and the mayor at that time spoke very, you know, very eloquently of how, you know, if, if they could, if we could put the money back in the community, it would do more help than the DEQ just taking the fine, and they allowed us to set aside an account for a certain length of time, and that's what the town manager was talking about, that a lot of people did take advantage, you know, that was able to pay their bill, but now that fund is gone, I mean, it was used up, and also, we do not have that way of, but, but everybody in town, west and east, had that opportunity, and it ran for something like two years, at least, and all that, before, you know, I think so, that, but it would be the disconnect or some pump disconnect, a lot of hidden gutters that then go down, under the house, down into the sewer system, as opposed of being draining out in the yard, so that it goes down stormwater drains, and all. I, I am saying this, Courtney, okay, I don't want to.
Well, sump pumps too, and, and you have to, you have to think about this a little bit, sump pumps is usually an after-the-event situation, because it has had, has to have time to seep in the ground, and those of us who have basements, may have sump pumps, even understand exactly what I'm talking about. What we had the other day was three, three basic causes, and that's stormwater, which can also be wet weather ditches, downspouts, which we have houses that actually have their, their rain downspouts going into the ground, into the sewer system. There's a rush of water, is what, what I'm saying here, and, what was the third?
Stairwell.
Stairwells. Stairwell drains.
Yeah, and that's where I was talking about the sump pumps.
Outside, you know, the old steps that go down into your basement have, have drained, and they're connected, a lot of them are connected to the sewer system, and they, you just would not believe the amount of water that goes in there. So, how do you fix it, you know, you say, well, I got a problem, what am I supposed to do? Back when we were paying for it, we would pay for them to plug that basement drain, or that stairwell drain, and install a sump pump, pump it out in the ditch. So, that's what we ask people to do that are connected, and you'd go to a house and you'd say, I need to look at your sump pump, and honestly, you know, if you've known somebody for thirty years, and a lot of us have, and they say, my sump pump's not connected to the sewer system, thank you, sir, appreciate it, and we move on, and as I told Sally, that's a good thing in a bathroom, because if we had somebody else actually doing the consult, say we had a consultant going door to door that didn't know this particular person, said, I'm sorry, sir, I hear what you're saying, but I got to see it, I got to see it with my old eyes, but, they may not even know that it goes in the sewer system, you know. So, that's the problems that we, that we ran into.
And when they smoke test, and they, and they take off the lid, the, the sewer cover, and they put the, the, the smoke device, I call it bomb, but it's not.
It is a bomb.
Get the smoke bomb in there, if you have a, a drain in your basement, and it's connected to the sewer system, now, because they're putting the smoke into the sewer system, any place that comes out, other than your toilet, or your, up, your, your vent on your thing, it means that there is a connection there so water can go through, that should not be going through.
The smoke can come out, or it can go in. And basically, we said, we saw ladders going all the way up to people's houses, and smoke just pouring out of them, and it's on private property, and it's an expensive fix, it's a problem. You know, you're looking at two thousand dollars to replace a ladder, and that's where we had the problem, and we all understand, that's where our, if we could get to them, somewhere where we could control them, which I feel like we might, we might be at that point with infiltration, but we've still got this infiltration issue under certain situations, and that was, that was unusual. And we don't get that that often, but we've had that in the past, Isbell comes to mind, and we had a lot of trouble then, and this, this was the first time it's happened since we began the project, so, again, it was a good test, to see what's going on right there. And while it's discouraging, it, it proves, before we finished and signed off on everything, that we still got an issue, so we've got to figure it out.
Was it a hole or flow, or something else?
Yeah, well, the system is flooding, the sewer system is flooding, under that type of situation, and it's fast, and it goes away fast, so, pretty much when it quit raining and the levels, I'm envisioning some wet weather ditch that's flooding, you know, and then it drops back down, our problem is right back there. I think it's a connection on a storm drain, I don't think it's downspouts per se, I know we've got some, but we didn't find that many when we smoked before, not near as many as we thought we would find, and a lot of them, with your kind, were correct. And those are easy, you just cut the pipe off, cut the gutter off, put the elbow on, and seal it, and take care of it. It's something big, and it's fast, and we just, and close to the pump station, that's another thing, it happens.
And it's on one side of town, yeah, it's on one side of town.
I mean, I know it sounds strange, but the next forecasted rain event that we have, we're actually, and we may need you guys to help, we're going to sit out in manholes in the east end, and you'll be watching, and if you're sitting there watching, and the manhole starts to flood fast, then at least you know for which direction it's coming, and it's a simplistic way of looking at it, but if, if anything we can do to try to find the rest, that's what we can do.
Well, that creek around the west end, it's usually two or three inches deep before the sun, people.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, it was, I never seen it.
But that, but that wasn't the side that all filled up, that was the thing, because that was my concern.
Yeah, right.
Wasn't that side of the town.
There, there are problems in the west end, don't get me wrong, but the majority of our problems right now in the east end, if we can resolve them, as y'all know, then we can work on the west end, get control of the situation. DEQ has been, we've been patient, they've been tolerant, they've got a vested interest now in their financing of that project, and we did not hear any feedback from the two overflows that I mentioned, which typically would, well, they know we're working on it, but they also know that we still got an issue, and I think they'll help us, I think they'll help us figure that out.
But we need cooperation from the public, we, we, you know, it's, it's like town tags or anything else, if we all would do our part, then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to have patrols or all that, you know, I know that's a perfect world, but, but it complicates things.
No, it's not just the overflows, it's treating of rainwater, too, the thousands and thousands of gallons of rainwater that we have to treat at the plant, that costs just as much chemicals as normal, surely flood, we would save money, you know, chemicals if we can seal the system, and you're not going to solve it hundred percent, I've learned that over the years, in a perfect world, it should be a sealed system, but it just doesn't work that way, and nobody has a sealed system, but you got to get where you can manage and control it.
Any more questions for the town attorney, any more comments? Okay, moving on to committee reports, we'll start with economic development.
Thank you, Mayor, very, very good, the economic development committee had a extended meeting, because we combined our July meetings into one. We talked for the first hour about the zoning ordinance, and then projects moving forward. The one project that we'll be working on specifically between now and the end of the year, is the informational pamphlet on the town via demographics, the economics, all of that, that we can hand out to potential businesses or individuals who may want to live in the town, something easily readable and attractive. The next EDC meeting will be on Wednesday, September second, at noon at that new crew. For the next regular council meeting, I will likely have the tourist plan that was established, with comments from the economic development committee and everything else for council's review and hopeful approval. I may try to get that to you beforehand, so that you have to get your packets to review the weekend prior to the meeting. Just a couple events coming up, Centrus Southside, our local hospital is having a grand opening on August the thirtieth, from Port Six. The Chamber of Commerce is having a chicken fundraiser on September the fifth, Bill, September fifth, see Bill, or me, or Tammy Glevins, to order some, some chicken. And last thing, no update yet on that Kiel grant that we applied for, still waiting here back from them. They said, beginning of August, it's now almost mid-August, so we'll see.
Any questions for the economic development chairperson? Okay, finance, sir.
Finance, good shit.
Thank you. Okay, public works, infrastructure.
We will have it for Wade, who was covering that.
Okay, personnel.
Well, I'd like to thank the police department for a successful night out Saturday, I understand there were four hundred food packages, and they ran, and ran out, so that means there were more than four hundred people, that's wonderful, I know everybody worked real hard, especially probably Beverly and Ellen, which, it's a wonderful event, and I hope more and more people will attend. And Wade, thank you for all the work you've done on this water situation, and we'll get to the end of it, and it's hard work.
Oh, we do, I'm looking forward to being bored.
Anything else? Okay, any questions for the personnel? Okay, moving on to public safety.
I don't have a report on the fact that we wasted my students' time, but they, and I enjoyed myself.
EB, you still got some good moves, being sixty-two years old. I seen you over at that DJ.
Did you get that, you go page sixty-two?
Yeah. I know, there's two comments, and one right behind the other. I would like to see sixty-two again. But I enjoyed myself, I thought it was very insightful, the town was well represented, and the public enjoyed themselves.
And, and the police had these good dance moves. I said, I, one of those that we're doing, I said, I believe I could do that, it was something about stomping your fingers. The macaroni thing, I never could get that straight.
The only one I didn't see having a real good dance move is sitting at the same table wheel.
You wouldn't.
Maybe he was playing music combined well.
But I enjoyed it, that's all I.
They need to work on that dolphin contest.
You think we'd have it lit?
If, if you all did not watch her, this, this is first time I was this close, but she's very professional about her, and you get down and you cannot use your hands, and so she took, it ended up looking like a scallop, it was a perfect dorkard, she took one bite and moved it, one bite, all the way around, of course, she didn't win, but it was very great.
Well, the object was for the children, and I got, I got, somebody took a video of that, and I got that this morning, I'm feet down on my, but it's fun, it was, it's all in fun.
And to just laugh, yeah.
Okay, moving on, community development.
The, we had another, maybe, a little setback, when Kelly Lewis had left for another position, but I've been bragging on this group, that it's such a well-oiled machine, and that means that it will go on with maybe a little hitch, but I didn't want to try to call her, because this has all just happened, and so I'll have a better update, unless Wade.
I have some information.
Okay, good, has something to say about it, but I would, in the future, because we've gotten into it in the timeline, I'd like to have some pictures to perhaps bring, to show some of the things, there were huge trees that had to come down, and things like that, that were on the outside, that could be documented or in here, so y'all could see it, but I'm looking forward to it, and like I said, I don't anticipate any problems, and we've been through a lot of things, but it is happening, so that's a good thing.
Okay, on community development, do you have any questions for her? All right, I'm going to come back to the vice mayor again, with the town of Crewe competency plan update.
Once again, you have a new seventy-three page report, and I do compliment Logan from the planning commission's office, because she continued to work very hard on getting some things that we had asked her since the last time. In the new plan that you have, updated one, we've corrected and grammatical errors, that sort of thing, improved some wording here and there, nothing substantive, the slogan was added to the, the town slogan was added to the explanation of the seal, that's in the very beginning pages. We also corrected, because previously it said the comprehensive plan was created by the planning commission, we've changed that to reprepared by the Crewe Town Council with assistance of the planning commission. Page three, this was a major change, there were some goals stated there that did not match the goals in the plan, so that has been changed to reflect this, so that the goals you read in every part of it are the same goals. You'll notice on page forty-five, we were able to get ITS manufacturing included, and page forty-six, the autism consulting center is included, and also, under the food markets, Crewe seafood and the Oscala, I'm not saying that right, the Mexican food market, I don't pronounce it right, and the Dollar General have been added as, as well as food markets. And as you read it, there are a few other things, but as I say, it's just a matter of wording to make it flow a little better for the house. I thank councilman Niskovic, who must be a frustrated English teacher, but his, his notations were very helpful, because once you read something a million times, you stop, stop seeing it, stop altogether. So, I'm not sure where we are in the process, I want everybody to know that this is a living document, so even though once something is approved, does not mean that. is approved does not mean that there can't be additions and so forth along the way. Of course, part of the plan is to update the status at least twice a year so that citizens can see. We will soon have it on, have it on the website so that people can view it. And then as it's updated, they'll be able to see that. So at this point, I don't know if the county manager knows or our attorney knows, is it appropriate for council to approve it in order for it to go to a public hearing or what do we need to do there?
If the process is going to a public hearing, then council needs to recommend that a public can be advertised.
Just a quick thing if we're moving forward with it on the economic development session. Did you get the new section, Maxie?
Do you want to, that was my question. Do you want to add that whole thing? You know, I emailed you about, do you want that to be an addendum?
Well, the, the plan itself, it's entirely up to you. But then I reworded, essentially restructured the entire session beginning on page 34. The economy and employment, just to reflect more of what we are dealing with the town versus the generic verbiage that's removed in the past. And I can, I can resend that to you and to, and the council.
I saw that you had crossed things out, but I didn't really see new wording.
Okay, there was a, yeah, it was, it was a word document.
No, I didn't get that.
Oh, I must have, have to attach it.
No, I saw the crossed out part. I'm thinking you have a new document.
Okay, let me, let me resend that to you. Unless you want to move forward, but I don't know.
We didn't have a two-week deadline. So, I mean, we're into.
Would we be able to amend it in the public hearing?
We could.
Yeah, I wouldn't see any problem with recommending a public hearing, you know, to discuss this comprehensive plan, subject to any changes that were made.
That would then.
Okay. As long as, you know, there was a copy of the comprehensive plan on file and, you know, the council had the full comprehensive plan and people were able to see that changes.
That was a question I had. If we have it on Facebook to where they can go in and read it, if we have it on our website and all to where they can go in and read it, and then if we have a copy laying in Town Hall, would that be sufficient?
That should be sufficient, yes.
Because it means anybody that has access to the internet could actually, you know, if it's in PDF form or whatever, you know, can, can review it right there.
Can we get that entire document, the one?
It would be in PDF form. I mean, it, it wouldn't be every page. Well, no, they just have to, have the app to open it.
Right, if, if, people, the county could, I'm sorry, it's, it's late. If the county could, could send it to me in PDF, I could put it up on the website.
I have it on the floor, Stowe.
That's perfect.
Because, and you can also refer to some places that PDF is not available on their computer where they can download, because it's going to be downloaded free.
Absolutely.
It's no, it's no cost to have the thing to convert it, you know, excuse me, upload it, I guess, unlock it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if you email me that.
I'll email that. If you email me anything back, I'll put it up on the, on the website.
Would we like to have a motion at this point?
I move that we hold a public hearing at our next regular meeting to review and discuss the comprehensive plan.
Second?
Okay, it has been moved in second that at our September meeting, that we begin with a public hearing on comments from the town on the Town of Crewe's comprehensive plan update.
And that we advertise for the effort.
Right. With adequate advertisement. Okay, all those in favor, sign the flag with a "aye". Any opposed, same sign? Okay, we'll have that. Okay, so we have to advertise two weeks prior to, and also in that advertisement, let them know where they can read it and all. Okay, 7:00, September. Okay, any other comments, questions on it? All right, we'll move right on to the police chase report.
National Night, we may have to look into the keeps growing like it is, finding a different location. We hate to do that because of the playground here. The playground stays packed from 4:30 afternoon until 10 o'clock that night. Really don't want to do that, but it's going to like, it's going, we may have to take all of this area, which would be a great thing.
A good problem.
Yes, a good problem. The turnout, the response is just overwhelming. People that appreciate it and having to have that one-on-one contact with citizens in a positive light and not always in the negative sense. It's great for us. We enjoy it. Beverly and Gallup, they did 99% of the legwork one this year. And they're now saving the job. Pop back there, our uncle and Mr. Watts, they come out and cook all the food for us, volunteer their time. The whole thing is put on by volunteers. There's no taxpayer money involved. All of it's through donations. The community comes together to put on this event. For them, you wouldn't be able to do it.
It was fun. And people that are able to laugh together. It's got to be. And to tell you how charmed I am, the cupcakes, I was sitting there looking, and it took me a while to figure out that it was a softball. And I said, "God, it's cute. That is really cute." But I was saying, gee, Chris, surely, I don't know if you get any slower, I don't know what's going to happen, but it was.
In your defense, I had melted a little.
It was, it was, but I realized what it was.
Would you, would you tell them some of the sponsors, such as like Southside Electric and all that, that did contribute, like Sam's? Go ahead.
Well, yes, Southside Electric, they sponsored the, have to be careful, because some people don't want to be named.
Right, right, right.
Southside Electric, they sponsored the Bouncy House. Sam's Club, let us borrow eight burner grill.
Beautiful.
Yeah. All we had to do is go pick it up and bring it back. And we may be able to get one given to us to recreate through them and the customers for National Night Out. Of course, we do something on Christmas. So many perks. They give us drinks.
But you also had, you had Madeline House, the, some of the booths.
The vendors.
Yeah, the vendors that were there too, that, that really, you know, plus to the community.
Fire department. Fire department, rescue squad. The victims witness protection funding thing. It was out there, yeah. I can't remember the name of it, but there were several. Asap was here. Call me on darkness when we're ready for that.
But it just was so much, I think each year I have seen more and more of the community join in and it was neat when the music was going. Because over the years, I had seen maybe the children get out there and dance, or some of the girls get out there and dance. In this time, it was moms and dads and the children and all, it just, and, and great music, sir. It just, it, it was a very nice event, you know. And I know it's hard work, but it just, to me, I look at what, when I look on the news tonight and see what's happening in other parts of the country, it just made me really feel grateful to have a night out where you all hosted. You all hosted and opened it up to everybody and I just think that's fantastic, you know.
And I believe about that, it's made a difference in the relationship with the police department and community here.
Well, don't you think it's an investment that you're going to see, see the little ones, this little, out there dancing, hooking off and having a great time. And so when they grow up, this is also a state of mind for them all. So I think it's really good.
You have any other reports?
Last council meeting, I talked about Crewe North, who had come in to talk to us about plans and possibly the cost of an increase department. I said, I would try to have a report for you guys this council meeting. It's not ready. We've been talking with them back and forth. Want to make sure they get it right for us. And they're going to do this for us, that had no cost. Maybe by next council meeting, I'll have something to give you, a better idea of what we're looking for and what a cost would be.
Just a quick question. Another great initiative from the, from the police department is that app that we're now taking part in, some sort of self-help app? I want to send an email. I forget the, the name of it.
Something like Helping Hands.
Neighbor, Neighborhoods something? Neighbor?
Yes.
I, I think that might be worth a presentation on. Just so the community knows what it is and we get used to, start using it.
If I get some of trial run now, as soon as we get it up and running, we'll definitely do that.
Great, thank you.
Finally, I think we have a pretty good hold on the library here and the playground. The amount of activity here has been reduced dramatically. We don't have a place like we were having. We don't have, I've noticed, I live right down the road, so I come by here anytime I go uptown, go anywhere. And I've noticed that the field out here is being used more for football, frisbee, maybe seeing some kids out playing soccer and not the hangout in the front and around the sides. And I've seen several families utilizing the playground over there. So the extra enforcement that we've, that we've been doing, I think has made a big difference on it. And we've been, we're going to start to maybe dial it back just a hair. We still need to keep it in check because as soon as we get an actual problem, we'll take it. But I think we've got a pretty good handle on that.
Do you have any comments with school starting? And buses?
I can't. School starts Monday. And one of the problems we were having was here at the library, we were having 25, 30 kids get on the school bus here or get off the school bus. The mayor and I had a meeting with Dr. Bernard and I always forget her name, Nancy.
Wow, Nancy Wallace.
And we're going to work together to try to take care of that problem. We found out that kids were coming from as far as Tyler Trailer Court or Custa Street, trying to bring them over here, drop them off, nothing catching us here. But we're going to try to put a stop to it from day one this year with the help from the school. I think when we got, talking with Mr. Bernard and Miss Wallace, there was actually five to six kids that should have been getting on the bus here, getting off the bus here. And there's no exaggeration, there was every bit of 25, 30. So if we can get that under control right off the bat, then I'll take care of that problem after school.
And it was no way to reflect trying to stop someone from using the library for study or for reference and all because they were not going in the library, they were walking in, they were crossing 460 where if they had an accident and got hit, that could, you know, and they were supposed to get off the bus on the opposite side of her, that, that could really, you know, cause a bad situation for the county and the town. Okay, any questions for the police chief? My report, since Steve is not here tonight, I'll go over a few things. Usually I, he and I have the same thing, Sam. First, starting with, I'm going to start into the month a little bit back. The All-Star Dixie Youth Teams, the three girls teams and all, we had a nice celebration Saturday night. We were all invited to the pep rally. And I wanted to tell Steve how much I appreciate on behalf of the town, having the Town of Crewe selected for the Virginia tournament because I just think that brought a, an influx of people into our town that helped us economically. Also gave our town just a wonderful setting. I, I just thought that, you know, that it just brought that home community setting to our town. And I know it took so many, so many sponsors, so many people that had to volunteer, you know, to run this. And as a town, I'm very appreciative of that. Wanted to again to thank the citizens who worked so hard in Night Out and the police. And it was good to see you all at, at Night Out. I just, you know, to me, it's, it's one event you just don't want to miss if at all possible because it's such a community effort. I do have a little update to add to Shirley's information on Stratton and Lipscomb. When we had the meeting, I think Shirley, you were on vacation when they had the meeting. And I was going to tell you, the homes on 304 on Stratton at the July meeting was 50% completed. The 300 Stratton was 50% completed. 501 Lipscomb was 45% completed. 302 Lipscomb, they were going to begin on July 27th. 209 on July 20th. And there were going to be two houses that were going to be demolished and they were looking to get those under contract and that was 208 and 212 Lipscomb. And when they got all the bids in, it was right exciting because they had a little money left over, but they didn't think on, it's a two-phase project. So they didn't realize they're going, so they are looking to maybe be able to do another home. And they will have the home chosen at our August meeting. So that's right exciting.
And they're drawing for the funds as they are going, they're drawing, okay.
Right. And I went by there today and I took some neat pictures. When you go down, you can see the new porches and stairways and all that, you know, I'm really excited for the people. And here again, anytime one home is improved, it also improves my home and your home because it brings all of our values up. When one, when one home is falling down, it affects each one of us. So it's a win-win situation. On my, on my eyes, it might not be in everybody's eyes, but I think it's a win-win situation for the whole town. Okay, one, one of the things that has been newsworthy that I wanted to show you, to tell you about, and it was to start tonight, and this was going to be put on by the government, not Notaway, I guess I should say the federal government, not Notaway and not Blackstone, but August 10th through the 12th on Allen Fesco, they were to have a, a community planning workshop. And it was for the town of Blackstone and Notaway County. And when I talked to Mr. Posey, I received an invitation and I believe that the mayor from Berkle received an invitation. I wanted to explain to you all why you all maybe did not receive one. What they wanted to do is, is so that if he and I were there, then we could bring the information back to you, but to include the county and Blackstone in this. If you're aware of what has happened on the news, there was, I'll call it a moratorium put on as of Monday. So this has been postponed till, I think it's a two-month period that they are having to work some things out. And when I'm saying they, Washington is having to work some things out and all on that. So, but I wanted to let you know that if you had a question, you know, we did, I was invited, I was signed up to go. And I have received a note from the county that said that, that is postponing the planning, the community planning workshop originally scheduled for next week, but they emphasized that it was being postponed. One of the things that if you've looked in your boxes that is coming up, that is the, Notaway celebrates the family. I think it's in all your boxes. I think we have it up, I think we have it on the website and all. That's Saturday, August 29th, from noon to 6:00 up at Hooper Park. The Kingdom Community Church in Crewe is putting this on. The Kingdom Community Church in Crewe is putting this on. It is a good family event and all, and if you see your neighbors and all, they have young children and all, you know, let them know that it is being held, and it's free food, we all like free food. And it's for families. The other thing, Labor Day, tentatively, the Veterans Memorial is, and I'm saying tentatively, they called me, and they said it was tentatively, but the dedication they are hoping to hold on Memorial Day at 10 o'clock. So if you are planning to be home at that time and all, you'll keep that on open so that you can come over. It's been a long process, but a very worthwhile process, and I can't think of a better way to, you know, for us to show our appreciation to those who have given so much, you know, this. And I think, Phil, you had talked to them too, they really want this to be...
A very localized, right, I often do to reach out, but they want the focus to be, and rightfully so, on the veterans and the individuals being memorialized.
Right, right.
Which is a very nice, very nice thing.
And then, you know, Val was with us last meeting, our fire chief, and September 19th, you got that date open, I'll try to keep it open. The Southside Virginia Volunteer Fire Association will be up at Hooper Park for their convention. It's a lot of fun, and when I'm saying that, I'm saying this to everybody in our community. Normally, they have a parade, I finally found my pictures from last time, and I gave them to Beverly, and she had made a copy for the fire department. But they usually have a parade that comes down through town, and these are all the counties and all that participate, and they have their fire engines and all, and then they set up at Hooper Park. It is the neatest thing to see, and the competition, and they all here around the activities that they need to do in order to keep us safe and to save our lives in a fire, to keep themselves safe, and it's competition. And I asked, well, how did we end up being able to, you know, be the host place? And it's because that whoever is the president, the elected president of that town. And so Crewe was chosen because the person that is the chairperson is in Crewe. So if we can keep that on the calendar. Those of, and I just sound like a little commercial. Those of you who get the Southside Electric little cooperative living, you'll see that our rare museum, Jerry Fuller got called Jeff, but at least it's in here. So it's always nice to see some publicity, some very positive publicity on what, you know, these, and this with all the volunteers and all. Again, let me also thank the employees of the town who have worked so hard through all that rain, and Tony who comes to all the meetings, I know he's not here, but if you knew the diligence that our employees go through to try, and from way on, that try to see that things are done correctly, and especially, you know, with the contractors and the engineers and all, all the eyes and all that are out there to try to make sure that we get things right, because we're using your money and our money, and with the monies we bought, monies from across the United States to pay for this, we want to get the value for our money and job well done. Quite, any questions? Okay, all right, new business.
Very quickly, Mayor, we, depending on how it was done, we should probably formalize the donations that we made, unless it was just simply taken out of an existing budget. The donations to the CDYRA and then the advertisement to, for the radio advertisement for the...
I thought that would come out of recreation.
Did it all just come out of a, okay, well, that's part of it.
Recreation, only food.
Okay, perfect. And then my only other new business, VML conferences coming up again. I encourage everyone to go, it's actually enrichment this year, so with no carpool if we so desired, come back. It's October 4th through 6th in the city. So if anyone wants to go, let me know.
We have not received, have we received a packet on that? I, because I try to...
Got an email, but that's, it's just a preliminary email.
Okay, I was going to say, because I usually try to keep that out, in case anybody needs to see it. Any other new business? Okay, continuing business, the first thing that I had on there was about the forestry grant update, in case we had to make some decisions, but at this point, we don't quite know what we are needing to decide on. So if you all have any input in it, I open the table, or we can move on. Okay, I put down the zoning ordinance changes in residential area one. I didn't know if any, any questions, comments, motions on that? Okay, council, do you have any other continuing business?
Wait, were you able to, it was my fault for not getting that contact information sooner, but getting in touch with DND?
Not yet.
Okay, that's fine, like I said, that was, I dropped the ball on that one.
All right, now, again, we'd like to open up to our audience here in public, any comments that you may have? Yes, sir.
I have one, well, not really a comment, I'd just like some information. When a person moves into town, how do they know when they're either renting or buying what zone they are in?
Well, if they ask.
Well, that they're stupid, they don't ask.
If they don't ask, then nobody can tell them, they don't need to know.
Okay, you say they don't have to know, now all of a sudden, there's a knock on your door. We understand you're running a business. Well, my business is registered in New Jersey, paying New Jersey taxes, but I have a computer that links to New Jersey. There's a situation. I'm also paying sales tax in Virginia and New Jersey, so where does that put me? Puts me on the drawing board for the attorney to think about.
That's what I'm drawing on.
Well, Steve, you're right, and that's kind of what I was talking about earlier, that there will be situations where...
I have no one that comes to my house, no one.
But you have a business at home.
I have a computer with a business card. Oh, I pay town tax, I pay county tax.
You know, on the pamphlet that economic development wants to get together, that would be one thing, too, to put a map of the...
And we do have maps, colored, very nice, very pretty. If we can maybe get copies of those for when people do come in to get the water trinket on, just to have it out there, say, hey, this is where your house is, make sure you know.
I mean, I don't want to open up a penthouse box.
People can look at it.
But at this point now, I'm concerned.
Any other public comments?
I think you're in an R2, and you're allowed to have it, but I...
I don't know where the, I don't know where I'm at. I know I live on 106 Cable Street, that's all.
That's all you have to know.
Okay, may I have a motion for adjournment? Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, that be adjourned on paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?